So many jobs.
Take one.
I call the meeting to order, and if you would do our indication firstly.
Thanks for bringing us all together tonight, uh, just hopefully have a good meeting and uh, that's it.
Amen. If anyone would join me for. I'd pledge allegiance to the flag, the Constitution, the Constitution, and to the Constitution, the Constitution, and to the Constitution. Would you roll call for us, Tracy?
Carrie.
Here.
Nola.
Here.
Christie is absent. Jeffrey?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Renee?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Public hearing, support by Nola in discussion. Are you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes.
Nope. There's two mistakes.
Okay, yeah.
On the pay bills. Motion by Renee Knight, supported by Renee Knight.
Oh, whoops.
Just wanted to let you know. Uh, this, the second page, towards the bottom, in that Lockton Street Light Resolution. Supported by.
Oh. I already see it.
Okay. So, just letting you know, this little tiny little.
Get those updated.
All right, with those two things, do we have a lot of things in front of us? Motion for the mandatory by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Renee. Any discussion? Are you not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The passes. Next, we have the treacherous report. And she's feeling alone, but if they don't have questions, you need to go over them. Anyone on the board?
I just want to say, um, the interest for October, six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Bill Christie.
Yeah, um, she's been moving money to the M class, and that's really where, you know, banks aren't, don't have interest really to speak up, so.
Yeah. She's rocking it.
Yeah, she's been working on that, and that's, I mean, inflation purchase on one end, and then challenges a little bit on the other end.
I just wanted to give her some kudos, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, very, very true. We'll place that on file. Next, we have paying the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Renee, second by Carrie, discussion among the board. Are you none? Roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Tracy, yes? Jeffrey?
Yes.
Christie, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department report. If you would shoot.
Uh, eight calls for service. Seven minutes and fifty-two seconds. Obviously, still a little over the average. By the call volume dropping is, uh, there's a new nine-one-one system that dispatchers are using called Pro-QA. And what that does is that classifies our calls differently. I mean, it's got, we can see a somewhat of a reduction, um, classified truly as an emergency. So a lot of calls that we used to respond to were now considered lower acuity, and then we don't go to those, and so. It used to be classified as priority, or Med One, Med Two, and Med Three. We don't go on Med Threes. Very few departments actually go on Med Twos. Um, I don't believe in our citizens needing to wait that long for, for an ambulance, so. It did, uh, it changed that Pro-QA, which made some of those Med Twos not Med Threes, so. Certainly, that's why I just, I think, a slight decrease in that call volume. Um, there will be, obviously, there's a shortage that we know of, the ambulances, uh, Trinity Health is now what, from Med, has become one, so they're not Trinity Health events. They're trying diligently to fix their lack of people, but we all know how that goes with public safety right now, so it is what it is. Uh, the fire prevention went very well, despite the weather. It like this is five thirty-five when the sun came out, it dried up, so. Uh, we did some math, and we came up with about three hundred and seventy-five people, which was one of the larger in the county, but that was still low for us, but it went very well. Those of us having difficult, had a good time, we did, um, went very well. Obviously, it's colder months are entering now. You start to winterize everything. There'll be weather close to happening in the next thirty-six hours, so. And then that's, uh, nothing except for the very low, and that's hopefully going to be done here, there, so we're happy. That's, that's what they promised, that they didn't promise, but it is what it is. We made it work, but we may have nothing.
Thank you. Next, we have the planning commission report by Lee. Do you want?
Um, that, uh, October twenty-fifth, I had one item, um, for public hearing, there was a amendment to our ordinance for the solar energy systems. Uh, we held a public meeting, uh, there's no public or permission comments, we kind of hashed it out for, and we motioned to support it to move to.
Yeah, item thirty-one. Perfect. We are up to our first public comment section. If anyone would like to make a public comment on an agenda item for three minutes.
It's a sound.
Ash three bells from the back. That's, that's true. Is it, is it with the running for office?
But no, I just wanted to say I appreciate all of you that, uh, that, uh, supported me in this endeavor, and, uh, thank you very much.
Perfect.
I want to say thank you for doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Any, any public comment? Our first decision item, our quarterly budget adjustments, and way I wrote this up, I didn't say word in here, he was in the package, I'll be right through today, but. I included brief explanations of each change, and that will be my plan over the winter here, as I'm preparing the budget for next year. For the entire budget to have an explanation, so that the paper itself is explanatory. Can we go over any of these, the new ones?
I'll make a motion to approve the quarterly budget adjustments as recommended.
Motion by Carrie.
Support.
Supported by Nola. Any discussion among the board? Are you none? Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Christie is absent. Tracy is, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have board review appointment, and the next eleven motions are, are all about either the board review or the planning commission, zoning board of deals. And so this one is Craig Minat on the board review. He's been out here a long time. He would be interested if more people want to apply and know somewhat of what they're doing. It's, it's a little technical. There's not an immense amount of discretion there, as the state is kind of centralizing those functions. Nevertheless, he's willing to stay on for another two-year term, which would start January twenty-twenty-three, so it's a reappointment.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Craig Minat for board review starting January twenty-twenty-three.
Motion by Carrie. Support by Lee, and discussion among the board. Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, and this is Wanda, she's been on the board review for a long time as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Wanda Todd to the board review starting January of twenty-twenty-three.
Support. I'm going to call that Carrie. Motion by Tracy, supported by Carrie, and discussion among the board. Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Scott, and he, there's a couple of things involving Scott in here, because he's been on a couple of boards, and medical issues. He, he was resigning from, and so that is the motion for here, so accept that for one of the boards.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Scott Holland from the board of review.
Yes, ma'am. Second.
He wanted it immediately. So, motion by Nola, second by Renee. Any discussion among the board? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Dave Glick, and he is a person right now that is both on the planning commission and the zoning board of deals. And this one is for the planning commission. It's a reappointment, says term coming up.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Dave Glick to the planning commission for a three-year term beginning January twenty-twenty-three.
Motion by Carrie, support by Lee, and discussion among the board. Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Jesse, who's here in the crowd, and this is for the, the planning commission as well, same thing, term coming up, and so it's a reappointment.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Justin McCormick to the planning commission for a three-year term beginning January twenty-twenty-three.
For discussions?
Yes.
I just want to say, Justin did a great job, but I do, I do have a concern, I just want to voice about conflict of interest with somebody that's on a board and also owning a business in that same township, because sometimes, like, I think that could be.
It, it can be, so, and it almost always goes like that, right? Well, I mean, a lot of the boards are that to some extent, because those are usually decently capable people that want to be involved in, in some way. And so there's essentially a process that if it goes through, because Justin will have projects that, that are happening. And if that is, then he doesn't vote on that. He stands from the vote on those, right?
I will support the motion.
Motion by Carrie, support by Nola. Any other discussion among the board? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Nick, and this is resigning from the planning commission, which is currently on. And the movement for this is that he wanted to go to a few, fewer meetings because his job had changed, so that was for this, which we have the zoning board of deals coming up later.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Nick Clennan from the planning commission, has at the end of the hover.
Support. Motion by Renee, support by Carrie. Any other discussion among the board? Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, and so this is to fill in that position on the planning commission, that's Kevin Ferguson, because he is the only person that hasn't been on one of these boards. I included, just like I have with other people, a bio in this case, and so a little bit of information, he wrote it up himself about him.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Kevin Ferguson to the planning commission starting December first and completing the term through August of twenty-twenty-three. Support.
Motion by Renee, support by Nola, and that's because it's filling in the resignations, so completing the term. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have Craig Minat to the zoning board of deals. This is a reappointment.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Craig Minat for the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term beginning January twenty-twenty-three.
I'm just doing voice votes instead of roll call. You have to be a roll call, like the financial staff.
Okay.
But, and I do do a lot of roll calls, more than most, but we can, and we can, we can move through these a little bit faster this way. So, motion by Carrie.
Support.
Support by Lee. Any other discussion?
No.
Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, this is Dave Glick, who's on both the planning commission and the zoning board of deals, and one person that does next, who's for the zoning board of appeals.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Dave Glick to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term beginning January twenty-twenty-three.
Or, motion by Lee, support by Carrie, and discussion among the board. Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And this is for Scott resigning from the zoning board of appeals.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Scott Holland from the zoning board of appeals as of now.
Support. Motion by Nola, support by Carrie, and discussion among the board. Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The passes. Next, and this is Nick, who we accepted to resignation from the planning commission to put him on the zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of Nick Clennan for the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term beginning December twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, support by Renee, and discussion among the board. Are you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, and that takes care of all of those boards for now, there's, yeah.
You're probably going to cover it. Um, after all that, we're, we set up openings and.
Right, that is, there's one opening on the board of review still, and I had a couple of people that were interested in it, and I tried to, we have in the back of the room, there's applications for zoning board appeals, planning commission board review. I try to keep them on file. A couple of the people that sounded like they might be interested in, in it, that I talked to, haven't put in an application, and so, no. If that one opening there, we technically can have a, an alternate on the zoning board of appeals and the board of review, um, which we, we don't have as of now. But not on the planning commission, that doesn't apply.
So one opening and possibly two alternates if we wanted to do that.
Correct. All right, we have land bid opening for Drexel and Putto. And so these are all the bids, most of them are from the truck. All right, this one is for land bid A, which I assume is this one. Over the last two years, as I've opened sealed bids for, for these types of auctions, I've not accidentally opened one earlier in the day until two days. So I had two envelopes stuck in my door. I opened both of them. One was for an appointment with the road commissioner, one was this. I glanced, I didn't notice what it was, and put it back in there, but that is why. Luckily, we only have one bid on this, so it should be non-controversial, nevertheless. And we had established a minimum bid of eleven thousand dollars for this. All right, and so the way this is put in is as a minimum of eleven thousand five hundred dollars, uh, so that is the bid of the maximum of nineteen thousand. But, so the bid is eleven thousand five hundred dollars. For parcel A, let me make sure.
Yeah, make sure.
Because you have parcel numbers right down here.
Yeah, I just got both first.
Both parcels?
Yeah, which are supposed to be bid together, yeah. So, yeah, the parcel numbers are correct, so eleven thousand five hundred dollars is the bid.
Make a motion to accept the bid for the parcels under consideration on parcel one, eleven thousand five hundred.
Motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Carrie, and discussion among the board? Are you none? Roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tracy, yes? Lee?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have, uh, other land bid that is up on the river, which is this one, which is still sealed. That's it, it is for three thousand dollars, which the minimum was established at eleven thousand. Let me make sure the price number that you wrote is the same. It is. So. So we have a bid for, I'm reading it the same way, right? It's three thousand, all right. So, yes, we have a bid for three thousand on a parcel that is, that's you, is that for a minimum of eleven thousand? That's it, that was the only one we had on that. I have four other ones, but they are all for the truck. Yep. All right, so, any motion on that?
Can meet the.
Next, we have the land sale request on East Daniels. And so this is normal information that we get for this piece. This is the first meeting, so we're deciding if it's going up for bid and how we will decide on the price of the next one, and then open bids in the third one. I would say on this, with us dropping down, which was a little unexpected, because we had the two realtors that were willing to do comps before, and then the one dropped off, and so we went down to one that I think it would be decent, uh, if we wanted to do it with the comps, and we keep moving forward with that, but include the true cash value from assessing too. Wouldn't like that we see that.
I would very fast. Yes, for sure.
I can make a motion, so I make a motion to use comparables from the realtor, if they're willing to do it, along with the true cash value from our own assessing department to consider setting a minimum bid for the referenced parcel on East Daniels. Let me, support by Carrie. Any other discussion among the board? Are you none? Roll call vote.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Steve is absent. Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Tracy, yes?
Motion passes. Next, we have the truck bid opening. We set this for a minimum of fifteen hundred dollars. I do have four bids on this one. All right, so first one, it is one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Second one is one thousand seven hundred dollars. Next one, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars.
It's kind of interesting, they're all.
But they're going up.
They're all going up.
That would be odd if it was.
Hope so, it was worth fifteen twenty-five.
All right, and one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, that is one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars, one thousand seven hundred dollars, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, and one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I make the motion to accept the bid for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Support.
Motion by Carrie, support by Nola. Any discussion among the boards? Are you none? Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Tracy, yes? Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the township hall roof. And I contacted a, a number of companies on the side of this line. I'm drilling, it took a while for them to come quote it, they were busy with all these things. They specialize in this type of porch roof that's up there. They would not recommend tearing it off and putting a new one on. They said it needs pretty extensive repairs. And so they sent me two quotes, and I double-checked with them, because I thought one might be for less work and one for more work. But they are both recommended pieces, because the one is for four to three hundred, the one's for nine thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. They are different sets of work. This is essentially, like, this has to be done, you fitters, you, in winter here or before winter, and then, but you really should do this. Uh, and he said, really, if you do this type of work every seven to ten years, this roof will last a very long time. And so that was the recommendation from them. I included the other quotes in here, all the other quotes will obviously be out of, out of date, uh, at this point, you know, but we could go back to them if we needed.
Yeah, you're saying the nine, the higher one is the one they say to do.
No, the lesser one.
They should do both. They're, they're recommending, given this, they do that.
Forty-three and the nineteen.
Will they do it together at the same time or?
Correct, yeah, together at the same time. It's like, but I. Yeah, but I, but I had them parted out in, in two pieces, because I, I'd asked if they could part it out in pieces. And just the way they came in, the description of them, I thought one might be for less work and one for more extensive work, but they are separate, separate areas of work.
I make a motion to accept the bid for a roof repair.
Motion by Carrie?
Support.
Support by Tracy. Do we have any other discussion among the board? Are you none? Roll call vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tracy, yes? Lee?
Yes.
Nola? Jeffrey?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes. Next, we have the village zoning administration contract, and so we've been working on this a little while. This is because the person that I found that currently does zoning administration and building inspections at the village is stepping away from those rules, at least for the village. And initially, I thought that would not, not necessarily be ideal to put more on Steve, but when I checked with Steve, because the village had asked me again, he was willing to tackle it. And so we've been going through this, and I went to the village council meeting and talked with them, they're comfortable with it, ran it through our lawyer to make sure that everything was good there, and so should be sat, obviously, the board here and the council there have to pass the same contract. Their meeting will be later this month, but assuming that goes well, the service can start December first.
I make a motion to approve the zoning administration contract with the village of Lakewood Club and authorize the township supervisor to execute this starting December first.
Support.
Motion by Renee, support by Nola. Any discussion among the board?
Do we have a contract with Steve to, for the, is this all passed through?
It will all be passed through. Yep. Just threw up. So initially, one of the versions of the contract that I had was how much of that money? Sixty-five percent, because then we calculate in the benefits that are going above that to Steve in the contract itself, but it makes sense for us to just handle that internally for the township, rather than being stuck in that contract, if, if we want to change it, as far as the payment goes. All right, are we ready on that?
Motion and support.
All right, roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Nola? Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Christie is absent. Tracy, yes? Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have treasure resolution twenty-two dash twenty for small claims court. And this came out because there were a few things that were delinquent on personal property taxes. But Christie had sent out letters and was able to resolve most of those, but there are a few that are just denied and don't want to do it. They're under the sixty-five hundred dollars, and so it could go to small claims court, and that is within the treasurer's duty, statutory duty, to collect taxes. But, what you laws are written, there should be a board motion to say someone can represent us in court, other than myself. I'm a legal agent by state statute, so I can go to court at any time. But to have someone else go, there should be a motion, that's why I made this right now.
That's in your court. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty, authorizing treasure to appear in small claims court.
Support. Motion by Nola, support by Carrie. Any other discussion among the board? Are you none? Roll call vote.
Nola? Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Tracy, yes? Renee?
Yes, ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, and next, we have water policy ordinance twenty-two dash zero eight. And so I included the extra in here, because I included the ordinance itself as written, and I included, included the red line written, so that's easier to point out the changes. And when they were talking about changing the charges, obviously, we, I didn't think they were afraid to do it. Often happens on double boards, I noticed that they start looking at changing one thing, then there's something directly next to it that could change, and it gets really expansive. And so all the changes that were proposed initially in the rates and charges were just eliminated, but two errors basically pointed out. Uh, Kim Arter from Lightton noticed that quarterly should have been monthly in this one section, and then I pointed out an issue in section B where other funds not belonging to the system, it, it essentially, it's written in such a way that we couldn't even accept the state grants, which they do there. And so there were just a few typhages in that area. The key piece, obviously, is the one that we've extensively discussed in mandatory connection, and this is written as we've, as we saw it last.
And so I'm seeing, actually, C, after a connection is made to the system, a non-contaminated well, non-contaminated well.
Yeah.
On the subject parcel may remain in use for irrigation and other similar uses occurring outside the building or the parcel. For purposes of clarity, such a, such wells may be used to clean animals, personal property, or the exterior of premises, but shall in no event be used for human consumption or bathing. This is really under my skin. I don't like this.
Yeah.
I don't like this. This is wrong. That's wrong. You can use it on your handle, but you can't use it on your person, and it's a non-contaminated well. This is too much big government right here. I don't like it.
And I, I think that's a, I think it's a reasonable perspective. I don't think there's, well, I mean, it's passed on the policy board. I don't think there's going to be enough of a push to move that fully back. I think the way it ended up, based on the way the discussions went, ended up pretty decent.
I think public needs to really stand up to the water commissioner, or whoever is doing this.
Yeah, you, you know, you get someone from the public to show up at a road commissioner.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance of twenty-two dash zero eight for rates, charges, and mandatory connection regulations for the water system.
Motion by Tracy. We have a support. I'll support it. And other discussion among the board? And other discussion among the board? Roll call vote.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
May?
No.
Nola?
No.
Carrie?
No.
Motion fails. Next, we have zoning ordinance twenty-two dash zero six for solar. So there's one other tiny thing, correction to accessory buildings, and that is the section one where it says reserved. So it's essentially nothing. But the piece on the zoning ordinance with solar is to move it from residential approval for solar coming to the full planning commission to just being able to be administratively approved by Steve. Essentially, the planning commission was rubber stamping it when they came to them, because you have to meet the setbacks and the different requirements, so there's no point in putting up that barrier to, to the process.
We also, we also remove the, uh, conservation district application. Because it's like, they have an extra like five hundred pounds per thing that they just come and upper stamp.
Right.
Things together.
Good one, yeah.
Extra hurdle.
All right, there was a motion on this.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero six for solar energy systems and corrections to accessory buildings.
Support.
Motion by Lee, support by Renee, any other discussion on this one? And now roll call vote.
Lee.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes ma'am.
Nola.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we begin our discussion items. First one, lake treatments, and that was approached by a few people, and the fire opened specifically about this, and then a few follow-up topics as well. And it was about West Lake in particular, about not doing chemical treatments. I think it's filled up too many plants, there's not enough space for the fish to breed and to live in general. They plant fish there, they collect funds and they plant fish, and they're not sticking around. We talked to PLM about it, and they say that there are chemicals don't kill the native species, but they kill invasive species. From, I'm not a chemist, but from what I know about chemicals, it's they tend to kill a little wider than, than something so specific. And I included just the amount of information reports essentially by PLM for, that we use for budgeting for the upcoming year. And on page two, they include their section about mechanical harvesting. So essentially, they can cut five feet down as the weeds are growing up. And so that may be a decent way to go, but really, the issue we have here, and I think the power does lie with the board, but we have a special assessment in place. And so we have some sort of duty to continue the process in some way. The people that came to me, they said there's general support for this. Whether that's true or not is very hard, hard to actually determine. And so it seems like we should have some sort of process in place. I think because a special assessment is usually set up initially with a petition for such a significant change like this, it'd be reasonable, they have some sort of petition process. And in that way, we're seeing what percentage of people are willing to sign on. And then it's the, the people that on the lake that would go out and put in the effort, collect the signatures, bring it to us, and say, hey, if it's supported. I question whether that should be fifty-one percent as the, as the deciding factor for changing. I think it should be higher in some way, I'm not sure how high. There will be some people that if you're going around trying to fill up petition, you're not going to be able to contact everyone. Even the, even the section on central that we have for paving, we got ninety-two percent, but there were two people you just couldn't, you couldn't find in the world.
Especially this time of year when people started heading to Florida.
And a lot of people that are in the last state.
Yeah.
Couldn't, couldn't be charged. And I know some people do mail-ins and that type of stuff, but if we're, if we're going to get a petition, that people are going to put effort into get signed, I would like them to know a number that the board is going to feel comfortable with, rather than us making it up at the time when we have the petition in front of us. Because there's going to probably be public comments in both directions, for and against. I grew up out by Blue Lake, and it was very contentious lake treatments all the time, because I swam in it, and then you could, you could allow your dog to drink out of it before you could allow it to get to swim in it. And there's, there's always issues with, with treating lakes and how it's going to be handled. And so what percentage would people be comfortable with if someone was going around getting?
Seventy?
Seventy percent.
Okay.
That's fair enough.
Does this like get the toxic algae?
I am not sure, because it lists the different stuff they use here, but it doesn't list specifically what it's for.
But then, I think seventy percent is a fair, I think a thirty percent maybe there might be some over there, so I'm trying to take that into consideration.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this, I know white people do live there, but black people, that.
Oh yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that seems reasonable, you know, it's like, if you feel like seventy-five percent would be reasonable, but it's very high. It's, it's also very high, so seventy seems decent.
I did petitions on Twin Lake for treatment several years ago, and we had to redo it all.
Yes.
We did it in the wintertime, and it was not fun, because so many people were not there.
Right.
But, I mean, technically, as far as I'm concerned, and if this was to come up on our lake, being that you only needed the fifty-one percent to sign it to get treatment, I don't see that pumping it up seems fair. You should always, if you're forcing the other forty-ninth percent to pay for treatment, then it should be the same ballgame every time. If the rule is that you need fifty-one percent, then you should stick to the fifty-one percent.
That's a reasonable argument, I don't think I would have passed it with fifty-one percent, but nevertheless, I, I know that they did, because in technical state law, like, you can't, you know.
I'm saying, but all these, all of these lakes are already on the assessment that was based on that factor, and I don't, I don't know that you could just be right if you just changed it, because, I don't know.
It's a solid point, yeah, if you come to me on a gravel upgrade or paving, which would normally get about a road thing with fifty-five percent.
Yeah, that's different.
Like, it's not going to move forward at all. But, but that's true, I mean, it's already in place based on the theory of fifty-one percent for that area. I don't know what the discussions were exactly.
Past practice, fifty-one percent, why would we change it?
Midway of what?
What we're talking about, like she's saying, if they've already been doing it, it's fifty-one percent.
Well, that's just all a special assessment.
Right.
Well, why would we change it now? Why just keep fifty-one percent?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can, right.
Okay, let's do that, fifty-one percent.
It's reasonable, she makes a very reasonable.
It's been past practice, why change it?
Yeah. You can change it, but it's simply, you know, then somebody's going to come back and say, well, I want my assessment redone, and I want seventy-five.
We're going to get there regardless, even if I had ninety percent.
That's irrelevant, you just, you know, I talk to them, and then they go away.
And I think, uh, like, cost-wise, we're still talking about either.
The price.
Yes, harvesting.
Well, we keep the cost about the same.
Harvesting or the chemical.
I would fear.
Chemicals down there, chemicals are, man, who ever stores that stuff, you get that in your body, whoever's going to store it.
Yeah, I have no problem with the lakes going natural, but that's a, you know, that's a personal view, it's controversial. So, all right, so where, where is everyone on, on the research?
I like her, she's been a very reasonable operator, but I think we should stick with fifty-one, if we start moving our numbers around, it's going to get.
It's going to get really awkward.
Doesn't, the most washing-washing.
Yeah, I would be like, why?
Right.
Yeah.
Oh no, people threaten to go to court, it's a, it's a joke among supervisors, how much we get threatened with court.
Even if we do get the fifty-one percent, it still has to go through the three, four-step process to get a special assessment.
No, because the special assessment already exists, this would change.
Changes the process.
Right, instead of putting in chemicals or so many chemicals, it depends on the way they would write up the petition that they want to the mechanical harvesting. So the funds are already approved.
When is their contract done on West Lake?
I.
They just did it.
It's, yeah, it's, it's a few, it's a few.
On the lakes, a little bit, on the different.
We just did West Lake this year. That's the thing.
Otherwise, I'd have been a good time to.
Yeah, see what's done.
Then when they, I mean, you know.
No one addressed it then, it's a problem, until now.
Well, there's that, and I don't think it matters, because there, PLM, we can say, all right, we're not doing these chemicals, we're, we're interested in mechanical harvesting instead. So it's more on the schedule of.
Helping you do?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
More on the schedule of just when, when we get paperwork done and that type of thing. So, I mean, I, you know, I, I would lean towards, and it might just be because of the way that I've, I've gone on the roads with the special assessments, I would lean towards a higher one myself, but, I mean, I think it's going to be, it'll probably be controversial no matter what.
No matter what, yeah, we're going to do that.
How's anyone else feel?
Guess I would leave it there, I just make sure they read that, the last sentence of mechanical harvesting. To find a dump site with a cut, that's a bit by my own back.
Well, I think, and I am, I would check on this specifically, but with it just being vegetation, it seems like it should just be able to go into our leaves and grass.
Yeah.
Because it should compost the same.
And it's composted.
So, is that true, Jazzy?
I would look, I would look into that, make sure.
If that's true, unless it could have some compost.
Yes.
It's kind of like grass.
It's got minerals in it. It'd be great for that, they burn it or something.
That's, that's, that's.
To spread.
To spread to other things.
But it's water, it's.
Right, so it should die.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
It is.
All right, are we good on this? And salary, and so I've, I've thought about this, because it's a position that fluctuates with the, with the weather and the seasons. In winter hours, obviously, you get kind of wild, and then nates and broad up, and then here too, moving towards the salary and type of wage. So what we're doing initially is if he is plowing outside of normal hours that he would be scheduled for, then there is a little bit of higher pay. Obviously, it has to be tracked, which is, it's fine to track that and that type of thing. But also, you're not supposed to fall below, I think it's thirty-seven point five hours per week to fall out of the full-time position, which there could be weeks where it's a little lighter, and then there's weeks where it's very heavy, and hours go way up. And so doing a salary position would make sense to just level that out, we just have a job that needs to be handled. Would make the most, well, it'd be the most obvious to do that when the budget year changes over, although I don't think that would necessarily particularly matter. And so we could do it in the next quarterly budget adjustment, it would be in the middle of winter, something like that. But I wanted to see where, where the board was on this.
Well, I think it makes sense to have him, especially him being on salary. But like you said, his hours swing so wildly sometimes, especially in winter, I've seen him out there.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's when the, when the snowblowing is necessary, so.
And there's dead days, and there's days where he's out there all the time, so it probably makes sense. Like you said, with keeping track of the time, that's, that's going to be kind of monotonous. They're paying sometimes lots of overtime.
Yeah, it will be a little bit.
Some days it was slow, and other weeks it was heat, like.
We'll have to have basically two time cards for the regular business hours and the after hour stuff, but, yeah. Nevertheless, I mean, that's, that's the way we have it set up now.
Now, he said he's okay with going to salaries?
He would prefer it, just so we get the consistency.
Business hour too. I just do.
Okay.
Pressure for, for supervisor, yeah.
Yeah, we'll look at moving forward.
Sorry, we'll be comparing, pretty much comparing what he's already receiving, right?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that, but we'll have to make it comparable, we don't know exactly what it would go over the winter. I'll have to look at those numbers of West Lake.
If you look at last year's, what he received total in payments.
Didn't work your life.
Oh, he didn't, what about the, what about the previous?
I did it, ma'am.
You did?
It would be, it would be hard, it'd be hard to fully figure out and calculate it.
Okay.
So, yeah, Alan's a decent amount, Troy, Troy worked out pretty good last winter. The winter before that was rough, and he did a lot. So it would be, it'd be a little bit hard to calculate off that, but we can go in a similar fashion and try to get some insight from other organizations and stuff, but that's, that's a bit hard to compare apples to apples as well.
Right.
Just different places have different facilities.
Don't you think the townships have maintenance?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, usually, I mean, Cedar Creek doesn't have one, that's the thing, but they, they do. And you have, I mean, you have different sized populations, you have different numbers of parks, different types, different types of facilities and what they're doing.
But a mission supervisor, I'm just talking one position.
It's the name, yeah. Yeah.
Because he's only full-time, that was all part-time.
Correct, and he's.
Yeah, I see, he'd be only full-time.
To know some of those numbers if it's possible, you know, those extra hours you have in the day.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at some comparative stuff, it'll, it'll end up being a little bit apples to oranges, but. All right, next, we have food sovereignty. And so I adjusted this, the weakest section was obviously the authority section. And so I went through pretty extensively, filled that in. And then I made, made a few other adjustments in it. Been playing with it, talked with the lawyer about it, had to change the definition of local foods, because the way it had initially been defined included everywhere would have included like McDonald's and that sort of thing. So that's obviously not the, not the intention, didn't work out great. And so I just, I hesitated on it, I think for, for one more month on actually bringing it to a vote, wanted to reach out to some more people and kind of see their thoughts on that type of thing. But I wanted to see if, what the board thoughts.
I like that, I like it, you know, I saw, um, she was either in Nevada or Arizona where an older lady would go to her local park, and she would feed the homeless for about an hour. There's a pavilion there, there's running water there, restaurants were there, and they actually rested this lady for that, because of the coordinates, against feeding the homeless people, and you're like, what? Well, thank you, I want to say thank you for this, because this is going to protect, because we're, we could, we have seasons here soon. And we need to, we need to know that we're safe to help people, to help people through.
I like it, I like, I like the way it, when it read, but.
So you're, yeah, it's very valid.
Yeah, I added a little bit of my.
Well, I saw the flyer. I saw the flyer.
You know what's your hits thinking of?
Jeff, Jeff Martin pre-handles. Anything else on that? No, all right, so we'll move on to our second public comment section. Anything anyone would like?
Um, the one land that, yes, already Jane had that because of a farmer fifty-four seventy, I suppose. The one land that had an escalation clause in it, it sound like, are those acceptable?
It did have an escalation clause, and we probably should clarify whether we want to do escalation clauses. Because I think that they're going to get messy, this doesn't have an amount that it would escalate by or anything like that. It just has two numbers, a minimum and a maximum. If we do escalation clauses, lawyer recommended against doing escalation clauses, because you can get this. It's like doing an auction, but on pieces of paper that you open. And, and so it's kind of, it would be kind of odd to do. And so if we bought, and lawyer also mentioned this, it's difficult to stop people from putting them in like that, because I don't know what's in there when I open it. I mean, that one, the one house that we sold that had.
They can be typical in real estate deals.
Right.
But that's what I'm asking, is if they're going to be acceptable or not, so that there's clarity on it, so that, hey, if you have an escalation clause, they're never going to throw you out, or, no, we'll look at it.
Or, or we're going to take the highest amount, or we're going to take the lowest amount as your bid. And so in this case, there's only bid on there, and so it's just.
Going forward, I'm asking, I guess, or maybe you guys need to look at, discuss that, but. Yeah, it's a good idea, because I, that kind of makes me uncomfortable as well. You have something like that, you're like, uh, are they really?
It's easy way to get more money.
It is, but at the same time.
It is.
I can see, I can see where it can go.
Yeah, it's nice in this case, because there's only one bid, but if there were two bids, then it gets quite a bit more complex pretty fast. And so what are people's thoughts on, so we could have a rule that, well, we could accept escalation bids. We have a rule that we throw out escalation bids, we could have a rule that we accept the smallest number as your official bid, or just state that that is. We could say that your highest number on there is your official bid, even if there isn't numbers.
Those are four options. As I said, it's four different options. I said, it's four different avenues.
Those are four obvious ways.
That's something I think we need to have in discussion. That's that's a separate issue. That's, I think, really, really.
Something more, yeah, like put it on discussion for next.
Yeah, so then we actually have some different guidelines, right, is in place, so we can say yes or no.
Didn't you do that on dump? Didn't you do that on dump? You took that escalation.
We did do the escalation.
We took that escalation.
I know it was done before.
Yeah.
That didn't seem to work out too bad.
It didn't work out too bad?
That one.
Yeah, I guess it helped.
She knew it was.
Well, the next one.
She did all the paperwork.
She did all the paperwork.
That that made it easy.
Yes, they've already started working on it if anybody's driven by it, but it's really nice to see.
Good. Did you have something else, Tracy?
Yes, um, so with the water policy ordinance, and you're concerned with that, Nola, um, I guess the only thing I would say about that, um, I wouldn't personally worry about that too much. Um, a lot of this stuff to get rid, because I'm in the water business, I guess. The state is trying like how to get rid of any any kind of liability they can. And so, you know, when they throw in verbiage like that and say that you can't use your well anymore to drink water from, it's not that they care that you drink water from your well, but it takes all the liability away from the health department and therefore the state. For an individual water sources versus a group water source. So I personally wouldn't look at it as the government trying to overreach or take something away. They're trying to get rid of liability, so you can't go back on the health department and say, hey, you approved my well, and now it's contaminated, and now I'm sick, and this and that because they took the liability right away. That's what they're looking to do. The state is looking to run as much city water, they're hard on running city water throughout the entire state, frankly. I mean, they're on all these water source replacements, and they want to run as much water as they can because there's a lot of liability hanging out there that the state has with wells. Is frankly what it is, so.
Isn't that's reasonable? This board is made up of township supervisors and county commissioners.
Right.
With the way the elections win, we'll have two spots on that board changing. And I don't know exactly how those will be, but I don't think they'll align with my various sets of beliefs. So I think that what we have is probably about as as good as it possibly is.
But it just, I mean, to take away that concern, I guess, I would.
That's true.
I don't, they're not going to come around knocking on your door saying that you're drinking the water. It's it's about liability.
But on the.
And it gets rid of liability.
On the same note, a homeowner is going to be stuck by paying for water they don't even want. Water that they've.
If city waters run down the road, they're going to have to no matter what anyway. So that's already been established.
Unless the house is two hundred feet away from.
Correct.
Where it's at.
Yeah, we included that in there.
I get that. I get that, but I'm saying when they've done studies on fluoride and chlorine, fluoride is a neurotoxin.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not saying I like city water. I'm just, I'm just saying, I wouldn't like that verb, because.
Well, I trust you.
Yeah, exactly. I don't trust them as far as I can throw the government in the paint box either.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not really.
They test for that, and if my well's clear of it, then I'm clear of it.
The only other thing I was curious on is the contract with Lakewood for for Steve. Is that exclusive to Steve?
No.
The reason I say that is okay, I mean, I hope it doesn't happen, but if Steve's gone in three months.
Right.
And now you need a zoning administrator who's built on the hook to provide.
Yes.
Lakewood.
Yeah.
Right, so then you get somebody else comes along, they say, well, I don't want to do both. Now we're we're carrying down our options possibly.
So, yeah, so one, we're planning keeping Steve.
Well, I don't know.
We, I asked, did you sure you really want to do this?
But two, you're you're completely correct, and because I, what I didn't want, right, is for Steve to be like, if doing, if he signs on with him as like a side job, then it becomes very weird because it would make sense for him to take calls or emails during the day here, but then he's using our equipment for a separate side gig that he's doing, and that doesn't work out very good. And so I think it works out good with the contract going through us. And what I've included is, uh, where we can give notice, a single side can give notice, now it's sixty days notice, right? Because it's a little bit longer, a little bit harder position to replace. But nevertheless, it's sixty days, either side can get out of it without approval from the other side. With approval from the other side, we can get out of it as short of time as we want.
Yeah.
And so it there is, it can be severed on.
That ain't so bad by sixty days.
Yes.
I think that's good. I just thought it, just looking at it.
Yes, you're you're correct. It's a contract between the township itself and the village itself.
Excellent.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Jesse. Thirteen hundred.
Now, Richard, fifty two seventy five people wrote, I agree with Nola, you know, and I think you as well. We shouldn't have to pay for the water hookup, you know, my well is fine, the only thing, the government doesn't need to tell me what to do in my well. Yet I do agree with you, sir, that, uh, yeah, sure, it's about liability for them, but I also would say it's government overreach. So there's that, that's my, so, um. The other thing is, I guess, I don't know if you're aware, proposal three, since that passed, all across the state of Michigan, you have conservative people, people that don't want to murder babies, that have run for political office, that now have to evaluate whether or not you're going to take that oath to the state of Michigan. So this is no game we're playing here. You know, you, it's a, it's a very important situation for people to consider, and I think it's actually, you know, it's actually a good thing. Because it's going to cause people that say they believe something to take a stand. And if it's going to cost them their position in political office and all of that.
Yep.
And they take a stand for righteousness of God. Got a lot of that.
Correct.
So that's all I can say.
Thank you.
What else? We don't, Rachel?
Rachel, here, Township Branch Library, just letting you know what's coming up. One thing the library does is it has film programs, we put them in our newsletter, things that the library sponsors and pays for, or the local branch does. But also the public comes in sometimes and just asks us for things. And so a few years back, a group came in and asked if we'd, if they could have their historical society meeting zone in the library. I said, sure, why not? It's your library. And then that was Dale Wizner started that, and then COVID came along, and he had some health issues in his family. Well, now a new group has decided to start that up. I was hoping Karen would come tonight, because she was one of them. We had, we've had two meetings so far. The first one, we had three people, and the last one, we had eight people. So, I'm in December fourteenth from five to seven o'clock. If you want to hear about the history of Twin Lake, what's going on, share your stories. If you have a family history, you want to put it on our shelves in the library for anybody to pick up and read. It's all good stuff. I want to get that information, have it available to people. So the Twin Lake Historical Society will be meeting at the Dalton Branch Library on Wednesday, December fourteenth from five to seven o'clock. Hopefully, I can get them out the door at seven o'clock because they love to talk. And they also have a Facebook page, if you haven't seen that. So again, Twin Lake Historical Society.
Is this a monthly meeting that they're doing?
That's the hope. We're going to see how the weather holds out on us right now through the winter. But some very enthusiastic people, so we're happy to see that happening at the library. This Saturday, again, another patron came in and said, can we do this? And I said, sure. And so if you have some jigsaw puzzles, now we're getting into the winter, it's a good time to have your jigsaw puzzles out, um, we're going to swap. So if you have some that you want to get rid of, bring them in, you'll get a ticket for each one you bring in. We'll have a table with other ones. You buy those with your ticket, and out the door you go. We have some leftover ones, we'll donate them somewhere. Um, and it's all good for everybody in the community. I get you through the winter. And we don't want to forget that Santa Claus will be coming to town.
How are you?
You're your cousin. On December fifth at five o'clock, easy to remember, twelve five at five P M. He will be at the Dalton Library, but he'll also be at ten of our other branches, so if you can't make that date in time, grab one of our newsletters, that'll remind you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's good. Anything else? Somebody want else? Sign anything else?
I only have one thing to say. Better check your timer because your plane might finally come out. It all stumbled here in the dark. It's not even rolling across the soul, I saw. Behind you.
Motion to dismiss. Second there.
I should take a turn. Second, all the papers say aye. Aye.
Thanksgiving, everybody.